Nine o'clock, we're gonna call the study session to order. Ready? We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Oh, let's see. Roll call, Bonnie.
Morris, here. Andrews?
Here.
Henchel?
I'm here.
Spence, did we hear from Commissioner Spence?
I understood she was on her way, but...
Walter?
Here.
Lynn?
Here.
McAllister?
Here.
Seifert?
Here.
Commissioner Nelson is excused.
Alrighty. First public comment.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the board may state his or her name and township or district. Providing a specific address is not recommended. Persons may address the board on matters or issues which are relevant and germane to county government as determined by the chairperson. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may, at his or her discretion, allow an additional opportunity or time to speak if determined germane and necessary to the discussion. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment may be received during the meeting when a specific agenda topic is scheduled for discussion by the board. Prior to the first public comment, the chairperson will indicate the topics on the agenda for which public comment will be accepted. Members of the publication to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the board until called upon by the chairperson. The board shall not comment or respond to a person who is addressing the board. Silence or non-response from the board should not be interpreted as disinterest or disagreement by the board. Please be respectful and refrain from personal or political attacks.
Thank you, Bonnie. You're late. Somebody have any comments for public comment? You're today to the study? Alright, so you're not approving the agenda, please.
We move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Henchel, second by McAllister. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, discussion. So, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have several items on the study session today, first of which is the Safe Harbor funding request. We have several people in the audience that are going to present two different presentations. And starting with Mr. Mangabir and Mrs. Takano.
Well, good morning, Grand Traverse County Commission, and thanks for providing the opportunity for us to speak today. I'm Dave Mangabir, the president and CEO of the Grand Traverse Regional Community Foundation. And with me is Sakura Takano, the CEO of Rotary Charities of Traverse City. As you know, homelessness is not just an issue for a few. It's a community-wide, in fact, a region-wide challenge that impacts everyone. It affects those experiencing homelessness, but also our residents, businesses, and service providers. Since last April, stakeholders in our community have come together through the Homelessness Collective, a group made up of over twenty stakeholders, including government, nonprofits, and neighborhood representatives. The collective's primary focus has been to foster safer shelter alternatives to encampments like the pines, create better communication and collaboration between stakeholder groups, and explore how to expand the capacity of year-round shelters to build a healthier and safer community. One of our key recommendations is to expand Safe Harbor services from October fifteenth to April thirtieth to offer shelter beds year-round. More safe year-round emergency shelter beds and closer connections to resources will greatly reduce the number of people living unsheltered in our community. If we do not support more coordinated year-round shelter efforts, we can expect more of the pines every year. The group also hosted other ideas for shelter sites outside of the city, and we collectively recognize the urgency to quickly identify alternatives to the pines for the health, safety, and well-being of those who need shelter in our neighborhood and business communities. Those discussions are ongoing as well. In the long term, we will work to address emergency shelter system capacity needs and barriers to basic necessities and supportive services. We will also support tools for more affordable and permanent supportive housing, all to achieve the goal of making homelessness rare, brief, and one-time in the Grand Traverse region. We're in the final days of the current homelessness collective, and the urgency of this request cannot be overstated. In order to keep Safe Harbor staff in place and ensure it's ready to operate year-round, starting May 2025, we hope today's information can help in the decision-making process to secure $200,000 in funding from Grand Traverse County for both 2024 and 2025. This funding will help bridge the gap for the increased operational costs Safe Harbor faces. The special land use permit, a SLUP application, also hinges on securing these financial commitments within the next month. Without this funding, we risk delaying or missing the chance to expand operations and meet the growing needs for shelter.
Thank you, Dave. As Dave mentioned, I'm Sakura Takano, CEO of Rotary Charities of Traverse City. Thank you for having us this morning. We also want to further acknowledge the county's previous contributions to providing essential services for those needing behavioral and mental health services and added supports to stay safely housed, like the Grand Traverse Mental Health Crisis and Access Center and Northern Michigan Supportive Housing Services. These contributions have made a meaningful difference in the lives of many, and we are grateful for the county's commitment to these services. In this request and the information you'll hear today, we are not asking for the county to do this alone. We're looking to a broad range of partners for support, Munson Healthcare, other philanthropic organizations, and the community at large. Safe Harbor representatives will share more about where they are with securing funds, and we want to make sure that this is a collective effort and that many have a role to play in it. We know that homelessness is a complex issue with no simple solutions, but we are not asking for perfection. We're asking for your partnership today in the best strategy we have right now to create lasting change. Safe Harbor's expansion will help reduce the number of people living outside, and we're also working on long-term strategies to address the root causes of homelessness, including housing development and supportive services. Since April, 138 individuals have moved into stable housing through the collective efforts of our partners, and we are seeing real progress. With your support, we can continue this momentum. Every night that Safe Harbor is not open, 180 to 100 individuals are sleeping outside in our community. We can and must do better. The request we're presenting today is a critical step in making that change possible. With the support of this commission and all of the partners, we can move forward with a solution that is both immediate and sustainable. And with that, I invite Ashley Halliday Schmidt, Director of the Northwest Coalition to End Homelessness, to share more information about expanding shelter access and how it relates to this regional concern. Thank you. Good morning. I'm Ashley Halliday Schmidt. What is that? It's barely a feedback. That's okay. It just startled me. Okay, you know who I am. Director of the Northwest Michigan Coalition to End Homelessness. And really why I'm here today, and part of this ask is to provide a little bit more context around how emergency shelter and more specifically Safe Harbor fits into the homeless response system and the larger plan that we have been working on with the collective since April and our plans to move that forward into a task force. So, to effectively address and end homelessness, which means homelessness becomes rare, brief, and one-time, we need to scale up all efforts in our region. And you all have already committed to doing that and partnering with us through the funding request we made in November with Northwest Michigan Supportive Housing. So, that's the housing end of the spectrum and what will help us ultimately solve this crisis in our community. And this is kind of what we need to do right now, which is scale up our emergency shelter efforts. So, we need more emergency shelter right now simply because people deserve shelter in our community. They do not deserve to live in the pines. The community has really shown up and said it is not okay that this many people are sleeping in the pines every night of the summer. So, that's really the main goal here, is to close the pines in 2025. And really, what that means for us is to not have unsheltered homelessness in our community. When Safe Harbor is not open, Sakura mentioned we have eighty to 100 people sleeping outside every night. This is our shelter capacity when Safe Harbor is closed. We have sixty-four individual beds at the Goodwill Inn that also include eleven family units, so we simply just don't have enough to meet the need when Safe Harbor is closed. And then having emergency shelter options offer a more effective response and a safer solution while folks work towards housing for both the people experiencing homelessness as well as the service providers and the first responders who are asked to serve them while they're experiencing homelessness. When folks are in shelter, we see things like exposure, you know, burns, wounds, ER visits. All of that stuff decrease because there's some level of stability while people wait for housing. This is where Safe Harbor fits in our homeless response system. Won't spend a lot of time here, but I just want to indicate there are three shelters in our region right now, one of which is the Women's Resource Center, who's serving folks fleeing domestic violence. And then we have Safe Harbor and the Goodwill Inn. Safe Harbor also offers shelter diversion services, which I'll talk about in a moment. So, again, Safe Harbor is offering basically a place for people to sleep and get connected to the services that they need to end their experience of homelessness. That is what a shelter does, and it is critical in the response to homelessness. Safe Harbor has already connected most of their guests to the homeless response system. So, over ninety percent of the folks who are staying there right now are connected to service providers that are working to help them end their homelessness, and they're also offering diversion services. So, Safe Harbor is not like a free hotel, right? It's not just, "Open the doors, come on in." Folks are at that front door asking people critical questions about their life and their experience to see if there's other places that they can sleep. If we can avoid people entering homelessness, we do, right? Like, that is our goal. We do not want more people experiencing homelessness. Our system can't handle that. And so, Safe Harbor has really stepped up this season. So far, since October, since it's been open, Coalition partners have diverted forty-three people, and only one has returned to homelessness. Diversion is not permanent supportive housing. Diversion is creative problem-solving, asking people, "Where did you sleep last night? Who can you stay with for the next couple of days?" Just so that they're not entering shelter that night, and they can build on that support system long-term. Other communities who are successful in addressing and ending homelessness do a lot of things, but these are kind of the two things we're talking to you more about, and we've been talking to our partners at the city as well. Other communities consider homeless services as really part of the emergency response to their county or their community. So, they treat emergency shelter and maybe outreach services as part of their emergency response, just like police, fire, EMS, and they fund it accordingly. Other communities also invest in a task force model, and that's what I'll talk to you about next, really developing a comprehensive plan, looking at the strategies to meet the need, not greatly exceed the need to address and end homelessness in our region. And then, the most important thing is scaling up the funding to meet those needs. It's one thing to have a plan, but if we don't have the support and the funding to scale up to meet that need, there's not a lot of meat with that plan. So, we need both things at the same time. If we don't have enough year-round shelter, we're going to see encampments spread throughout the county. We're gonna have not just the pines, but we're gonna have sprawl with that. Our first responders are gonna be, and our homeless service providers are going to be asked to respond to encampments, likely not just in Traverse City proper, but throughout the county. There's likely to have more people die in the streets. We'll spend more money on law enforcement, incarceration, and other services, maintaining people in unsheltered homelessness. More money will be spent on ER visits. Care coordination and the support that it takes to end homelessness and help people recover will be far less effective. And it will be difficult to meet our end goal, which is to make homelessness rare, brief, and one-time. So, also, kind of what we're teeing up for you today is this idea of the task force. This slide just really talks about the collective, which Dave and Sakura already did a great job of explaining. But now it's time to transition that into the task force and get a real plan together that's comprehensive of the entire scope of the problem. The purpose of a task force would be to promote long-term, sustainable solutions to meet, not exceed, the needs of the homeless population. Convening stakeholders, developing the unified strategy that includes specific goals and objectives related to, "How many shelter beds do we need? What's the location of the shelter? Who's going to fund the shelter to make it sustainable? How many permanent supportive housing beds do we need to really meet the need and move the needle on the homeless population?" And then finally, having the funding and policy recommendations to support that plan. Again, our idea is a comprehensive regional plan, but without the policy and funding to back it up, it will really be meaningless. And then finally, I'll just leave you with an example. I think we've talked about this before. This is an example from Santa Clara County, California. And really, the reason I show this one, I think the goals really align with things that we're seeing here. So, Strategy Three is the one I want to highlight. Improve the quality of life for unsheltered individuals and create healthy neighborhoods for all. That could be a larger strategy of the task force of this community. And then what we would do is collectively try to figure out, "How do we get there? What funding do we need? What policy do we need in place to really be able to, say, we improve the quality of life for unsheltered individuals in our community?" So, now I'll hand it over to Pat and Wayne to talk about the Safe Harbor ask.
Commissioners, thank you for your time. My name is Pat Livingston. I've been a shelter volunteer since 2012, and I am the current Chair of the Safe Harbor Board. Just want to walk you through our operations as they exist now. So, Safe Harbor is a volunteer-run seasonal shelter as part of a continuum of care, as Ashley just mentioned. We also focus on community partnerships in order to better collaborate on long-term solutions to end homelessness in our region. Our current shelter operations, our existing SLUP allows us to operate from October to May. The hours of operation are Monday through Sunday, 6:00 PM to 9:00 AM. Safe Harbor's current season begins October fifteenth and ends on April thirtieth. Our existing SLUP allows for ninety beds, but we have set our nightly maximum guest number to seventy-four. And that's really for the safety of our guests, our staff, and our volunteers. We've learned what works over the years. Our nightly staffing consists of Safe Harbor staff and community volunteers. The community volunteers, every night, outweigh the staff. We provide evening meals, thanks to those volunteers made up of various churches and organizations. We provide guests access to laundry, showers, internet, entertainment. We provide basic hygiene products and clothes for them. Staff works with community partners to get guests connected to critical services with, again, the goal of permitted housing. Safe Harbor has recently added a resource manager who works with volunteer care connectors to better help guests connect with critical community services and track their process through the system. Our care connectors are all volunteers. We started this a year ago. It's been critical in getting the trust of our guests. All they do in the night that they're at the shelter is meet with guests, and then they find out their stories, what they need, and then they get them connected to the people that need to know their story to help them. We have offices for community partners such as TC Health Clinic, Harm Reduction 217, Goodwill, and diversion specialists. I volunteered last week at the shelter, and I got to witness how diversion works. As Ashley mentioned, when somebody comes to the door and they tell us that they are a first-time person, they have not been to the shelter, there are a series of questions that the staff asks right there. Once they get into the shelter, we determine they need that for the night. We get them to a care connector, and they start to drill down on their story. A particular young man was a first-time person at the shelter, and through a series of days and questions, we determined that he was here for a relationship and that he was actually from South Carolina, I believe, is the state. And within days, we got him back to his family and in South Carolina. So, that is how diversion works. Hours of operation for expanded shelter operations would change. It would be Monday through Sunday. We first looked at 8:00 AM, or 8:00 PM, rather, for letting our guests come in the door to 9:00 AM, but we are not sure what that time will be until we get there and experiment with it. Same-guest services are provided during the winter season. With community meals option, so much in the summer, we will not be serving evening meals. Our staffing for the shelter year-round would be an operations director, which would need to be hired. We look at two Safe Harbor staff members and a small number of volunteers in the evening, and two Safe Harbor staff members overnight. Human resource support, we use Axios HR. That cost will increase. The city would need to approve a new SLUP as we go forward to allow expanded shelter operations. We are in that process. A safety plan already is in existence for the surrounding neighborhood and businesses. Safe Harbor would work with the city, county, and neighborhood on any changes needed going forward. Incremental funding would be needed to hire an operations director, as I said, and pay staff year-round and other associated maintenance and supply costs. Estimated costs for year-round operations, $1.1 million. Over the past year, we have met with the Community Cares Coalition. This is a group formed from the neighborhood and had a chance to talk with them one-on-one on other alternatives. Safe Harbor will continue those talks with the CCC, community leaders, and the task force about a long-term solution to care and house those who are experiencing homelessness. I'm gonna ask Wayne to come up and walk you through the budget and what it would take for expanded services.
Thank you, Pat. My name is Wayne Sternberg, and I currently serve as the Treasurer for Safe Harbor. I've been involved in the organization since, I think, 2004. So, I go back to almost the very beginning of this ministry, and it's been a very rewarding experience for me personally. The budget shown there in the pie chart format, $1.1 million is what we have projected for year-round operations. And the largest component, as you would expect, it's a very lean budget. Staffing is the critical element, and that's almost seventy percent, sixty-nine percent of the total. And then in addition to that, the second significant item would be to maintain the facility in terms of cleanliness, maintenance, utilities, things of that nature. And then a small amount of administrative costs to keep the organization functioning, and then a small contingency. This is a detailed itemization, a fairly detailed itemization of the items that make up that $1.1 million budget. Again, as you can see, the staffing is laid out there. The facility items are itemized, and then the administrative items. So, again, it's a pretty lean budget. You're getting a lot of bang for the buck in terms of the amount of services that are being provided by volunteers and people in the community supporting the organization. Where we are on funding, this pie chart shows, I'm working, starting with the red square there. That's kind of been our typical seasonal operations budget, $500,000. And that funding has been received from a large number of private donors. And we expect that that's gonna be a sustainable source of revenue in that neighborhood. In addition to that, then, we've secured a significant lead private donorship gift from a private donor of $150,000 for the next two years. City of Traverse City has committed $125,000 for the next two years. The Olson Foundation, $50,000. Munson Healthcare, $50,000, again, for the next two years. That leaves us with an uncommitted funding of $225,000, and that dovetails pretty closely with what we're asking from the county here today. $200,000 for the next two years is what we're asking for. And that would be largely fill that void. I'm confident that we could fill the balance of that uncommitted budget if we're able to get those funds from the county. Thank you.
So, I think we can open it up for any questions with any of the partners involved. And then I'll make a brief mark at the end of questions.
Questions, Commissioner?
On the budget part of it, I noticed, you know, as staffing is certainly a huge expense, do you feel like you've maximized what you can do with volunteers? Could you talk to us about perhaps staffing with volunteers to cut down on the expenses of operating the program?
Well, the staffing is really set up with two, pretty much two staff during the majority of the hours that we're open. We have three staff there during the critical check-in time. It really requires some expertise in terms of being able to deal with individuals that are experiencing homelessness. Volunteers are really not skilled to handle that part of the operation. That's been our experience, anyway. They can serve in a supporting role in a number of check-in process and other support functions, but I think we pretty well maximize the use of volunteer base. Yeah, on any given night, there's typically two to three staff there and probably a dozen volunteers typically during each evening. So, it largely outweighs the number of paid staff that we have.
Pat, could you reiterate the number of volunteers you have at Safe Harbor in the microphone for the people at home?
We have over 2,000 volunteers. A lot of that is made up with churches. We sat in June the weeks that we are open, and churches and organizations are assigned different weeks. I'm the coordinator for St. Joseph, and we just did seven nights. So, we provided the meals, people in the kitchen, and then also out on the floor, helping. So, I think the exact number is probably 2,200.
Do you... Sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna follow up on that, if I may. Do you have a sense of how much the volunteer... I know, can you categorize the things volunteers do and how much? I know food is a big one that happens as well in as well as outside of Safe Harbor to be prepared to serve that meal at 6:00 PM every night. Do you have any sense of, at least for St. Joseph's, what the budget is that you have dedicated to that and what the source of those funds is?
I think as far as the meals in every church differs in what they serve, but I would say a couple thousand dollars for that week. A lot of it is brought in and prepared there, but we do cater. A couple of personers want to do that. So, a good amount is spent. And just to, there's five to six people in the dining room that is preparing and serving the food. There is two people that are out with Safe Harbor staff that get the guests checked in. There is somebody that distributes the medicines that our guests may have, and that's anything from aspirin to the prescriptions that they have. And then there's a guest service person on the floor that's really there to help where needed, to fill in any place. So, and I must say that we have so many community volunteers that sometimes, you know, we've got plenty of staff there at night, and thanks to our community volunteers. They step up all the time if somebody can't be there for the churches.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn, go ahead.
I'm just kind of following up on that note. With no meals being prepared during, evening meals being prepared in the evening during the summer months, is it possible to bring more of those volunteers to kind of fill out those new shifts that will be created?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're looking at two to three volunteers. We haven't determined that number, but to go back to what Wayne said, the staff is really critical because they are trained to deal with guests and trauma. And they also, when our guests are getting ready to come in, the staff goes out and meets them and they want to make sure that they're in the frame of mind to come into the shelter as well, that they're in a good place. And that's for the safety of the staff and the volunteers. And I would invite any of you, if you'd like to come to the shelter and witness that first hour when you're checking in guests and watch that staff work, they're amazing in what they do and all the volunteers. So I would invite anyone that would like to come to the shelter, even for a tour if you want to do that during the day, but certainly come at night and watch what is done. I think you get a pretty good picture of what the emergency shelter is.
I also noticed that you have a donation from the Olson Foundation is for sustainability purposes. Are there any plans to grow grants or asking other foundations for funds?
This may be a better question for Dave Sakura, but at this point, I don't know, you know, foundations typically, it's challenging to fund operations, has been our experience. So when you've funded one time, kind of initiative like this, they tend to come up to the table and make commitments, but to fund operations is much more challenging, has been my experience.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to remind the county commission that funders in the area raised $51,000 when Safe Harbor closed last spring for the handwashing stations, the temporary bathrooms, and the charging benches on 11th, right across the way from the pines. In addition to Olson Foundation, Community Foundation, Rotary Charities, number of other local funders are considering providing financial support for Safe Harbor. But I would just say that philanthropy does not have the capacity to provide large amounts of funding to sustain operations at Safe Harbor. It's really there to provide funding for gaps where local units of government, the state or federal governments don't, you know, don't provide the resources or not permitted to under their various statutory authority.
Thank you.
Mr. Walter.
Yeah, thanks. I have a couple of questions. And maybe this is for Pat, I'm not sure, but you mentioned the SLUP process. Where are you with that right now with the city? Can you give us an update on how that's looking?
So when we were asked to consider going year-round, or could we go year-round to solve a problem, and we thought it was very, very important that we had the funding in place before we went forward with the SLUP. And so once we have the funding in place, we will go forward with that. We have been working on it, we're preparing it, so when we are confident that this is a go and we can do this, then we will file for that SLUP.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, you know, the area along 11th Street referred to as the pines, there's still, I don't know exactly how many people are still living there right now. Couple dozen maybe, Ashley, or more and are not, for a variety of reasons, able to go to Safe Harbor. So can you speak to how expanding the shelter services or maybe the task force can address the people who will still be living there? That's not really an end to the pines, right?
Right. So, yep, right now they're, well, right now it's well below zero. So the numbers have decreased as Safe Harbor all season has not yet been at capacity until very recently, was it maybe this week? I don't have the number in front of me, but the first time they reached capacity was this week when it was so cold. And so having Safe Harbor open year-round will be part of the solution to ending unsheltered homelessness, but that's why we need the task force. We need to come up with comprehensive, sustainable solutions. We will likely need a little bit north of 74 beds to meet the need. Right now, we've got about, like I said, it dropped, but it's probably around 30 to 40 people out there right now in the pines. We're working with the Goodwill Street Outreach Team and the Traverse City Police Department social workers to have a plan for each and every one of them. However, without enough permanent supportive housing or even affordable housing in this community, there are not solutions for most.
So is the goal, one of the goals of the task force, or you hope that the task force will also provide recommendations for another kind of shelter where those folks could maybe go, who would be accepted because for various reasons, whether they have substance abuse issues or maybe they have a dog or there's all sorts of other reasons why they're not going there. Is that part of the goal of the task force is to maybe create other shelter, temporary shelter opportunities for people like that?
I think the goal of the shelter would be to have every shelter that exists in this community operate through best practices. And best practices would be having a low-barrier shelter, which Safe Harbor does. Safe Harbor does accept animals if they're just as the Goodwill Inn, if they're like the, what do you call them, emotional support and service animal designation. So they do already do that. Both shelters also accept people suffering from substance abuse disorder and mental illness, pretty severe and persistent mental illness. Both shelters already do that. So in terms of being low-barrier, we hope, like the coalition would support shelters that operate in that capacity. Building another shelter is likely not, well, we need to explore how many beds we need. That's what else, we need more beds to meet the need. Do we need to expand shelter beyond our capacity? Absolutely not. If, in this kind of environment, we don't want to exceed the need. We want to meet the need. And so the task force will really explore what is the exact need and what are the specific reasons that we aren't addressing right now as to why people don't access shelter. Part of it right now is also a capacity issue, but that shouldn't get in the way of us providing enough of that emergency shelter right now for the folks who can access it.
I'm sorry, can we respond?
Thank you. So I see that there's 75 people at the shelter a night and that's how you max out. And in my opinion, that does require staff. I mean, it makes good sense. Could you break down the staff for me, like how many people staff Safe Harbor a night and what they're, how they're grouped?
Yeah, during the opening check-in period, which are typically, staff would come in about 5:00 o'clock and so from 5:00 to 9:00, we essentially have three staff there, a supervisor and then two individuals working underneath that supervisor. Supervisor is highly trained, so she can deal, he or she can deal with crisis situations. So we have three staff during that period of time, then from 9:00 until midnight, those two staff, two of those three will stay on, one will leave, and then from midnight till the morning, when we close at 9:00, there'll be two overnight staff. So that's, and then when we're open on the weekends, which we are right now, we have either one or two staff there during the day shift.
McAllister.
I was going to ask about your volunteer staff and you said you had 2,200. You're open about six and a half months now. If you're going to open up another five and a half months, do you need more volunteers to cover that gap? Or do you need more and how do you find them?
Yeah, we can always use more volunteers. We always welcome an increase in our volunteer base. This will be a new experiment for us in terms of being open in the summer season, so we're not really sure how it's all going to play out in terms of all volunteers. We know we have a core there that are probably going to be there, but we know that we're not going to have the same degree of volunteers that we have in the winter season. That's, we're pretty certain of that.
But you also won't be serving an evening meal, which is a lot of volunteers, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Andrews.
What's the difference between the homeless collaborative and the task force?
So the homeless collective was really formed to figure out some answers for the pines, some like of what Dave was talking about, some sanitary stuff, like getting the porta-potties, getting the handwashing stations, meeting kind of that urgent need and then trying to figure out what right now we can do to offer more emergency shelter. That's very narrowly what the collective was. It was obviously much more than that, but that was kind of the main goal of that collective. What the task force will be is comprehensive. So the task force is going to look not only at emergency shelter, but at permanent supportive housing, at day services. So like the day shelter capacity has also come up in our community. We'll look at that. We'll look at the root causes of people entering homelessness. The homeless response system is not going to solve this problem alone. We need the support of community mental health. We need our partners, like addiction treatment services. We need all of them coming together, developing this plan with us. It will also get specific, like I said, so it's not going to say things like, "We need more shelter." It's going to say exactly how many beds we need to meet the need during each season, the expectations that those providers would meet to get funded by this. And then we'd offer funding recommendations and policy recommendations to implement that plan.
Do you anticipate the participation would be different? Do you anticipate that the structure would be different? Do you anticipate those would be public meetings where the minutes are reviewed with their committees? Do you have a sense of how that functionally or practically is different than what's been going on through the collective?
Sure. That's a great question. I don't think I can answer that fully in terms of would this be a public meeting and things like that. I don't think we've got that far. What the structure I'm hoping would look like would be kind of this top layer of philanthropy, county, city, and homeless response system, which would likely be me, kind of guiding the strategy and vision. So that's like that leadership team. Beneath that would be kind of those core stakeholders and that's what we're working out right now, trying to determine. Beneath that, then, these groups would work in kind of these main sectors or buckets. So it would be emergency shelter. We'd have a focus or a committee or work group or whatever you want to call it, focused on housing, day services, and then those preventative aspects, getting at the root causes. So that's kind of what it's shaking out to look like right now. Likely, we'll be coming back with a formal ask for the county to participate in that leadership level and then also participate in helping us fund and shift policy to make the plan work.
There was some discussion in the presentation that most of the commitments for the $1.1 million funding plan are two-year commitments. And there has been in the past, and I can't remember when, there's been a lot of discussion over the last couple of years, a temporary two-year SLUP for Safe Harbor to go on a trial basis while a longer-term strategy is developed. Is that, where are we on that sort of concept of a two-track process? It looks like from a funding plan perspective, that is the plan, but that's not what's being discussed, to my knowledge, on the SLUP. Can you give us some sort of a timeframe around both the...
I mean, I can generally, and then I'll hand it off to, I can't speak on the SLUP specifically, but yes, like we're ready. This task force needed to start probably two years ago, but here we are. This, I will say, I think this emergency shelter issue could have gone easier had we had a plan in place, a comprehensive, community-supported and backed plan. We would be coming to you with that plan already in place and be saying, "This is how many beds? This is the fun," I mean, this could have happened different had we had that. So that's the reason that we're having the task force or asking for the task force. We're ready to go. So we've done some initial planning. We've already had the momentum of the collective, ready to kind of hand it over to a task force. So we're ready to go and walk right alongside this process. Or do you have more specific about the SLUP?
No, I just want to make sure that a two-year timeline for shelter to be open and be funded by all these community groups is consistent with a timeline for the task force to achieve something like a plan in that same amount of time so that we're not, you know...
We're not right back here. Yes. My goal is to have the plan by the fall. We, it's not like we're coming up, I'm just like coming up with it. There's many people in this community who are experts in what they do in response to addressing and ending homelessness. We're also aligned with the national experts, the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness and the National Alliance. We look to them and other communities, so we know kind of what we need. We just need this plan to kind of be put together and more folks to weigh in on it.
More questions? I have a couple. No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just to follow up on the task force questions, when do you anticipate that will be formally started?
Hopefully April.
I have a question. I'm looking at your funding sources and is there any federal funding mixed into this that I'm not seeing?
Not right now, right?
No, we don't have any federal funding at this point.
Okay, is there, I'm just Googling around and what I'm seeing is a lot of shelters are funded between 30 and 50%. Federal funds, HUD grants, substance abuse programs. We have an expert here.
Hello, I'm Dan Buren, the executive director for Goodwill North of Michigan, and we do operate the other shelter, Goodwill Inn, that was mentioned, and we do, that's correct, about 30% of our funding for our shelter is funded to the federal government. So I think one of the things that came up, it's okay if I address a separate, another question as well.
Please, enlighten us.
I'm not sure how the protocol is. So I think we talked, the question's about the task force and I think that's a really critical question to be asking, to looking at a longer-term solution, kind of looking at the entire shelter system as a whole and kind of looking at what makes sense going forward, whether that is combining, creating a new one. It's just looking at that whole piece. We've never really had a chance to do that. The task force is an opportunity to take a step back because right now we did Goodwill, you know, was it 1983? We had Safe Harbor, we have Jubilee House. Taking that step back, the task force is an opportunity to look at the whole picture and say, "What makes sense going forward as an organization, you know, as a community?" And I think it'll address a lot of the questions that are coming up. Unfortunately, as Ashley mentioned, this is like, what's the best time to plant a tree? 15 years ago. What's the second-best time to plant a tree? Right now. Task force, no different. We probably should have been something we did a while back. We didn't. We're here now, let's move forward. We have some interim things we have to do in order to get to that point. We don't, I don't think any of us here want the pines to continue. This is a short-term interim solution to being able to do that effectively. I do want to comment on the budget. A lot of questions came up about that. Given what I've seen since running a shelter, this is a very lean budget. It gives them a lot of credit for their ability to leverage a lot of the volunteers. You do need to have professional staffing. Really, you're dealing with some people in the worst day of their life. That requires people's ability to be able to manage that effectively and have that continuance. That's because volunteers come and go. Volunteers are great, but, you know, they have lives. If it's a nice day out, you might not see them. So I'm sure that's not happening with you guys, but that does happen. You really need that consistency that the staffing provides. And the other part about the diversion, I'm really glad that Pat brought up that story. They've done an amazing job this year with really understanding the clients that we have and who really needs to go into shelter. We're not, they're up until recently, they haven't been full. I understand that's the first time it's happened in, I think, probably ever since they've been there. So I think we're seeing a really, a lot of really good positive momentum moving forward. positive momentum moving forward, both for short-term solutions, and I think this task force, long-term. So, we're kind of doing, asking you guys to support both.
Can I ask a follow-up question? The Goodwill Inn is how many beds?
It was 63 in singles, plus 11 family units. So, it's about 110 total.
Okay. And, and just so you know, Dan is a great resource to the community. I reached out to him last year about volunteering at Safe Harbor, and he made the connection for me. Did get to go volunteer, did work the intake, and I agree, you definitely need trained staff that you can count on and managing and reaching out to those volunteers and making sure they were trained right, so.
Well, actually, it was you and your son.
Yes, yeah, took my son along.
Yeah, very cool.
I wanted to mention just one thing, because there, if there's concern about extending our shelter operations through the summer, enough volunteers. Within Safe Harbor, we have a steering committee, and that steering committee is, is all the churches and their coordinators. And so, they know that this plan is being presented, and we may go year round. So, I'm confident that through this steering committee and both the churches and then our community volunteers, who've stepped up numerous times, that we'll be able to, to have the volunteers that we need for the summer.
Aaron?
I have a question. When you talk about expanding and $200,000, I represent District 8, which is the south, 20% of the county. You're asking for 200 grand for two years. How do I respond to them that since the month of October, when Safe Harbor opened, the amount of incidents they had at the district library, which is funded by tax dollars, went from four to 23 incidences? Is part of the plan being open longer throughout the year to minimize that? In addition to that, my question is, this might be kind of rhetorical, it's fine. The other question that I have is, is in this task force, I haven't seen any recommendation about law enforcement or bringing them as a partner. Just because a certain law enforcement agency is unwilling to arrest somebody because they live in the Pines, doesn't mean they're not committing crimes. And that happens every day.
So, I can address the, a little bit of it, and then I want to hand it over to Pat, because we do have some law enforcement data. But, yes, I, I didn't mention that. What we're wrestling with is where to kind of, it's not if law enforcement will be involved in the task force, it's in what sector, because they can touch all of it, right? And so, there is kind of, when I talked about those four buckets, one of the buckets in, like, addressing kind of root causes, that's where we were having the safety discussions. And I think it could land there. Not sure where yet, but law enforcement will be included. The Chief of Police has been at every single collective meeting, along with their police social workers through the quick-response team. That's a critical part of our response to safety issues as well.
Just last week, I talked with Chief Richmond from the city police, and they've been a big part of the safety plan. And if, if going forward, if we are year-round, we would want the county's involvement, we did meet with Sheriff Shea about a week ago and kind of talked through our plan. From the chief, that incidents at Safe Harbor are down this year, and in a meeting with the Boardman Neighborhood, just, I think, a week and a half ago, they asked, "Are things better?" And they got the reply, "Yes, things are better." And I think that was because of what the chief put forth. And Safe Harbor, we changed a few things. We took our entrance to the south to make sure that the guests, as they line up every night, they're on our property. That is reduced in, in reduced garbage and other things happening. We haven't received any complaints from our, from our neighbors. And so, incidents are down. I can't speak to the library issue, but it's probably something, obviously, that has to be addressed.
Thank you very much.
If I could, Mr. Chair, I actually spoke with Michelle Howard yesterday, had a good conversation, and she was actually quite positive, said law enforcement has been very helpful in enforcing people who are banned for being drunk or high at the library. You know, it's an ongoing challenge, but the law enforcement has been quite helpful, according to the title director.
No further questions, are we? Nate, thank you very much.
So, I think there are no further questions. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you to the Coalition and to Safe Harbor for presenting. Any of us are available if you do have additional questions, or if you want more data. We are, you know, trying to be as kind of open with information, if we can get it, you know, make it easily accessible. And hopefully, we will be invited to make a formal request at a future meeting. And with that, thank you so much for your time.
Mr. Chair, if I could add a little context. When I met with Mr. Livingston, it was a week and a half or two ago, the, there is some time sensitivity to the decision-making from this board on the request because of the SLUP. And if I could, we, could we bring this back on the fifth, the first, I'm sorry, the first meeting in February for consideration?
Sounds good to me. Any objections?
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your presentation and being here today. All right, so we're moving on. 5B.
Thank you.
Kate from the Health Department. Where are you, Mike? There you are.
I've already heard it.
The tissues, maybe. The computer? No, okay.
The tissue. The tissue.
Wait a little bit here. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, board. Quick introductions here. Mike Leahy, Deputy Health Officer here at our County Health Department.
Brent Wheat, Grand Travers County Environmental Health Director.
So, I thought maybe a good way to start was to provide just a quick summary of 2024, kind of how we're here today in front of us at the study session. I said, a new face on the board, as well as kind of a new look to the board. So, in 2024, we came before the board here as the County Health Department twice to discuss further consideration for a local regulation around onsite wastewater. In 2024, we also met as an ad hoc committee three times, and that ad hoc consisted of local elected officials from this board, us as the County Health Department, as well as some community partners. So, we had Aspire representing our real estate partners in the community. We had local townships. We also had some private industry input as well, from pumpers and haulers of septic systems. So, this is the first draft that we are presenting to the board. So, while we've been in front of the board twice in 2024, we have not yet brought a draft forward. The draft that was included in the package for the study session was a result of that work as an ad hoc. So, we, we went through a few renditions of that with ad hoc, and then we also have gone through two renditions of that with legal to produce the draft that, that we shared here for today's discussion. Really, that draft was, was a, a good compromise, right, about stepping into this regulation arena, if we so wish to do so, but also addressing public health concerns that we had identified through those conversations. Why are we even discussing this to begin with, right? So, really, the state had proposed and had pushed through a statewide sanitary code regulation, starting in '23, gained a lot of traction in '24, came down to the final minutes, it seemed like, of calendar year '24. Ultimately, that did not get pushed forward in the legislature. At the same time, we, as a local health department, as well as some of our peer local health departments across the state of Michigan, were looking at that language, identifying issues with it that we had as local health departments, and just in regards to just being able to operationally do that, and the impact it would have on the community. So, we started taking a look at what we could do locally to maybe step into that arena a bit without that broad sweep that the statewide regulation proposals had. Ultimately, that conversation in Lansing has been tabled a bit, just with the change of the calendar year and a new landscape makeup in, in Lansing. But we do have an idea that that's, it's probably going to come back around again here. There's just a process in which, in Lansing, that has to go through. So, Mr. Wheat is here. Really, I know this, this content well. Mr. Wheat, as our Environmental Health Director of the Division of EH within our, our Health Department, knows it that much better than I do. So, I do want to begin to introduce Mr. Wheat a bit to answer some of those technical components about operationally, how do we, how do we, how would we perform this in the community, what's feasible, what's not. I think I can help him speak on behalf of just the Health Department as a whole, in our position within the community. One thing I would just like to add to the conversation as a study session is, this work is not currently addressed in our staffing plan. So, we would have to begin to plan around that, right? What does that look like within our staffing model? We have started to have conversation with local health departments in the state that have taken it one step further. Macomb County has a very similar-looking regulation in place that we have put forth here that utilizes third-party inspectors to really leverage those, those inspections in the field. In conversation with them, just at a surface level to begin, there, there would be a potential ask in regards to staffing, but it's, it's much more limited, pulled back a bit than what our first presentation presented a little bit in 2024. And that's really because we took a step into the arena of leveraging third-party inspectors. But ultimately, the lessons we're learning as a local health department and talking to our peers, as while this program, if, if we so choose to adopt, the intent would be to primarily fund this through fees. There are some grant dollars that we can begin to apply to the work, but we have not yet found a case in which some level of local appropriations haven't had to been utilized to sustain the program. But as, as you build the program, those fees, the, the revenue from fees does begin to, to build, but really found some, some conversation about trying to weave out some of those local appropriations. We're, and Macomb County is a really good resource for us right now on that. With that said, I don't know if Mr. Wheat has anything to add, or we're here for questions. I know the, the draft was nine to 10 pages, something of the sorts. Open for questions? Open for input? Please, we're here.
Mr. Walter.
Thanks for being here. Can you speak a little bit to the Leland County system that they enacted before us several years ago, I believe? So, they're a little, a little ahead of us, and how that's going and how this might compare to that, both from the kind of ordinance standpoint, as well as the, just the day-to-day operations of it and how that's going there?
So, Mr. Wheat and I spoke with Health Officer Dan Thorell at Benzi-Leland District Health Department last week, just kind of comparing notes of building a program out. So, they're a little different than ours, as their staff are the ones performing the inspections. We, we initially took a route of doing third-party. But Mr. Wheat had dove into some of the numbers, just the difference between Benzi-Leland Counties, right, and Grand Travers County. Those numbers are different, and if you want to...
So, yeah, like, like Mike said, the inspections in Leland and Benzi County are done by staff members. We're looking at a little bit different model, as well as they are countywide. They performed, I think Dan said, around 600-ish inspections last year. If we were looking at countywide, it was 1,000 to 2,000 inspections a year with the home sales in Grand Travers County and transfers. So, we were looking at more of a third-party option where we just kind of want to get our foot in the door, look at those higher-risk sites around surface water. So, what we were proposing is inspections for any dwellings containing wastewater systems within 300 feet of water. That allows that third-party inspection database work group to kind of build itself out. Right now, there's four to five inspection companies in Grand Travers County. 75% of the inspections we receive are done by one company. So, primarily, it's that one company doing most all of the inspections. And we hear that from the likes of Calcasas County, who also has a third-party inspection program, similar to what we're proposing. Yes?
Mr. Spence?
So, it was 500 feet from a body of water, and now it's 300. I believe the last time I listened to your presentation, it was 500 feet. Why, why the reduction?
With the ad hoc committee, that was kind of the, the, when we got together as a group, that was the number that everybody kind of agreed upon.
Based on what?
As I recall, it was like common sense. If it's 500 feet away, you're not going to have any contamination versus 300. It just doesn't travel that far.
I'm not a biologist, but I would have to disagree with that, because, and 300 feet is pretty close to a stream or a body of water. And having grown up on an inland lake where I did see septic tanks fail, because they were handed down to families from Grandma and Grandpa, and then you invite all your guests, and the septic tanks can't handle that capacity, and then we would swim in that lake. I, I think it's better to err on the side of caution.
So, I, I think, recalling, we spent an entire ad hoc one day just discussing some of this criteria. In our county, in, in the proposed regulation really reads surface water, right? So, not just inland bodies of water, but also wetlands and other bodies, surface bodies of water that would fit this criteria. We also addressed, so that's, that's a lot in, in Grand Travers County, when you really start to look at the topographical map of wetlands, inland lakes, the bay, and those sorts. It, it's, it's why I used the word earlier about a compromise, right, about stepping into what may be achievable. And those numbers did change quite a bit when you went from 500 to 300. But again, that, that was, that was derived ultimately by that ad hoc. I think we, as a local health department, are, are open to just further conversation on it in this, in this, in this platform here. But some of that did go back to that, what can we do that we can ultimately put into practice? Because as a local health department, I don't want to put ourselves in a position that ultimately steps in front of another process in our community, that is the business transaction, right, the transactional relationship of property in the county, right? So, I don't want to put us in a place where we, we begin to hold those processes up. We've become a barrier. So, those were some of those considerations that, when we weighed the 500 versus 300, we took into account. But again, that was, that was kind of a collaborative landing point there, that if, if this board would like to have us revisit it, open to that.
Got any more questions? Mr. Andrews.
When we received the presentation back last July at the study session, you presented big-picture information about the number of sales around, I want to say, 800, and the number of transfers, I want to say about double that, around 1,800. My understanding from having been one of the participants in the ad hoc is that we landed on a subset within the 1,800. So, we took the bigger number of transfers, but then we turned around and reduced it down to transfers, the higher-risk parcels, those closer to water, to Commissioner Spence's concern, the difference between 300 and 500. Biologically speaking, I don't know if it's defensible. Either one is a step forward, because currently, we inspect zero. So, the idea is to take a step forward, and it doesn't have to be a leap, it can be a step. Whether better is better, we can debate that all day long. My, my question is, do, when we met, there was still a lot of discussion about what are the numbers? When you talk about 500 or 300 within time of transfer, do we, and, and there was some spitballing, I would call it... I would call it, around what that number might look like? Has that progressed? And I, this isn't a test, I just want to have some sense. It's a subset of the 1,800. I assume it's a pretty, relatively small, but do you have any universe?
Yep. So, our last visit with Equalization Department, they produced numbers for us for 250 feet. So, based on that 250 feet, we're looking at about 200 to 500 inspections.
And per chance, did they give you a 500-foot?
They did.
And?
I don't know off the top of my head right now. Sorry.
A bigger number?
Yeah. It was up in the 600 range, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I've got a couple other clarifying questions related to the ordinance here. One is, let's see, Section 3, Definitions A, Board of Health shall mean the Health Committee of the Grand Travers County Board of Commissioners. To my knowledge, it doesn't exist. We don't have a Health Committee, do we? So, part of this is the creation of a Health Committee?
No, yep. So, that is language, but ultimately, that defers back to this board here. This board is serving as that Board of Health.
In the absence of a Health Office, or, I'm sorry, the Regional Health Authority, the Board of Commissioners, is by default the Health.
Okay. So, we are the Health Committee as well? Okay.
Correct.
And then, the appeals process, it just states that there is one to the Health Department, I believe. But what would that appeals process look like? And would it come to the Health Committee or the Board? Or is that, it doesn't really say that in here, or maybe I didn't see that?
Yeah, so that is defined in our Environmental Health Regulation, so our Septic Code, Septic and Wild Code.
Oh, the appeals processes?
Yeah. So, and yes, it does come in front of the Board of Health.
So, let me just play this out. Somebody, you know, selling their property, there is, they need to get it inspected. Either they don't want to get it inspected, or don't want to pay for it, or for whatever reason, can appeal the process? Or are they appealing the results?
I think the decision, like the result.
Okay.
So, it would be, okay, third-party goes out, says it's failed. We go out, we verify and agree that it, we believe that septic system has failed. They could then come and appeal that process.
To us? So, it would just, it would come to us? And is that how an appeals process is currently done in the Benzy-Leland situation? Or is that a common?
The only difference there is Benzy-Leland has a Board of Health, but I would have to look at the absolute language within their sanitary code, but it's a similar process. Just the difference there is they have a Board of Health who, I'd want to read the language before I spoke to it.
Okay. I'm just wondering, we have other, like, appeals boards, right? So, I'm just wondering if that makes sense?
Yeah. And that would be a step ultimately that we would have to take if direction was given by this board, is begin the work on the guidelines, right? So, operationally, how does this be put into practice in the county? And that then defers back to, as you read through the draft, the guidelines drafted by the department, the Health Department in that case, where we can spell those things out, referring back to our sanitary code in the county.
And what is the projected timeline? You spoke earlier to, you know, not wanting to hold up the 30 days or whatever, if somebody's trying to close on a piece of property. What is the expected timeline, given the capacity of the private vendors right now, for something like that? Have you had conversations with them about it?
So, in conversations with Dan Thorell, they do all of their inspections in-house, obviously. So, they receive an inspection request in, they go out, they do the inspection, collect a water sample, that then goes to a lab, and you're looking at about a five-day turnaround in conversations with the third-party inspectors. They said, he said that he would collect water samples, do the inspection, and his turnaround is about two weeks.
Any further questions?
Can you walk us through the process? I know you walked us through the process seven months ago, in terms of public hearings and public notice and public process.
So, I've been training my head to just call it the 10 and 20 rule. So, we would have to post this proposed regulation 10 days prior to meeting to discuss its official adoption within the county, and that would have to be 20 days in advance of the regulation actually being adopted. So, 10-day notice of the discussion to be had, and then 20 days prior to the regulation actually being adopted. That's based off Michigan Legislature that I have right here in front of me, just 10 and 20, is how I'm trying to remember that.
Last call? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we're going to take a five-minute break, everyone. Next one can be lengthy.
... agenda, I wonder if you would entertain a motion to take public comment. We have some people in our audience, including some who have strict nap and snack schedules, who might appreciate the opportunity to speak at this point. And so, I would make a motion to take a limited public comment out of order at this point.
Sounds like a great idea. I'm going to second that. So, all in favor? All opposed? Roll call vote, please.
Andrews?
Yes.
Panchel?
No.
Spence?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
McAllister?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes.
All righty, second public comment. If you weren't, Bonnie, if you please, the rules are the same as before?
Yeah, we don't read them. We read them once. Unless you really missed it.
Hello, my name is Betsy Corbett, and I live at 428 Washington Street. This is in regards to the Safe Harbor conversation. The existing Safe Harbor location is at capacity and in the heart of a downtown residential neighborhood, which poses public health and safety challenges for both the individuals they serve and the surrounding community. There is frustration from me, because as a neighbor, but also as a caring and compassionate community member and human being, I not only witness the dedication and heart of Safe Harbor, but also the challenges with the location, funding, and capacity. We need a plan to come together. We need the county to come to the table with support and resources, but we also need to not just throw money at a process without a clear idea of where the funding is going and a clear idea of the plan ahead to make sure we aren't right back where we are in two years. I feel a slap needs to be in place before funding is granted. There is work being done on alternative solutions and locations with the hopeful support of Safe Harbor, but yes, it takes time. I understand we need an immediate solution for the pines, and I want that too. But I encourage you to have a benchmark or clear idea of where funding is going and be supportive of Safe Harbor in a different location with wraparound services. My fear is with money granted, the homeless collective will dig into the current location and model that has been proven could be more successful. We are at a unique point where we, as a region, could be a model for the unhoused. And as TC grows, I feel we need a plan. We need more housing and smart development, but this starts with emergency shelter. We appreciate your support for this critical group of people, but I ask with this gift, you confirm where the funding is applied, as well as be supportive of other locations, a cooperative model, and show a unified front of support. Thanks.
Thank you.
Kara Galvin, Webster Street, also speaking on behalf of the Safe Harbor request. So, my thoughts are that part of the duty and responsibility of the position you're in is to make sure you're watching out for the community as a whole, and specifically those that are giving the services, getting the services. There's also a responsibility to due diligence for how the funds are being used. A little bit of my background is I am a ER nurse for 10 years. I saw firsthand every day how much addiction and homelessness impacts the community, the hospitals, and all of the resources that, within the hospital and community. So, I also saw how broken the system is and how it's really not being run proficiently and correct. But also, with that background, I was taught that interventions really should be provided, that are provided really should be evidence-based practices. And that's where my problem comes in of, Safe Harbor's model is not, as it is now, is not currently the best evidence-based practice. We need to have 24/7 care. Per the model, per the model built for zero, shelters need to achieve real-time person-specific data collection, which is not happening. Per the NIH, one of the most important factors of success are shelter-based clinics, which is also not happening, because there is no report to be happening. My request is that we don't throw money onto a Band-Aid without it being regulated and without there being movement towards those best practices. The county is well behind on helping fund resources, so I do welcome money to help the homelessness from you all. But with that, I would hope that there are stipulations that that money is being used for active movement towards a location and a model that does actively meet those needs with evidence-based resources. And, sorry. So, there are other resources in the area, like Jubilee House, that have already expressed their desire to move locations and join other resources to fill the gaps, like the day shelter portion that they won't be providing. I do request that you bring the CCC to the table as someone that you talk to while you're figuring out how you want to fund. They really have made great strides in the short time to bring resources together. They've met with architects and builders who have already donated their time, who have already signed on to moving forward and doing things in the future for the community. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And they have people writing, who are really good at writing grants.
My name is Scott Wick. I live in Traverse City. I'm a Traverse City resident. I'm also a business owner in Traverse City as well. I just want to acknowledge the fact that I think Safe Harbor has done fantastic work. And I think the pieces they've been able to bring to the table have been hugely beneficial, not only to our community as a whole, but also to our unhoused population and community members as well. I will say, after watching the presentation today, I also come from a business background, and I live by a simple mantra, "You inspect what you expect." I think if Safe Harbor and the other folks can come to the table with a larger group of stakeholders, we certainly can put a plan in front of all of you that can be thought out for the next five to seven to 10 years and not put a Band-Aid on a two-year pilot. So, I really encourage you to think through that and to ask the group to be thoughtful and to inspect what we all expect as community members. Thank you.
Last call for public comment. Thank you very much, everyone. Moving on to 5C, Ethics Recommendation. Mr. Alger?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Seifert. Commissioners Matt Nordford, upon your request, took the ethics policy question and he had a couple of different attorneys look at this. And what you have in your packet today is the existing ethics policy, two versions that Cole Stoker came up with, with different procedures essentially on how to walk through potential violations. And then Matt also provided us some examples, I believe it's Oakland and McComb, that, for your review and your discussion. Mr. Nordford is not able to be here today, so this, he's on vacation. And we told him that we would take notes and refer questions back to him that you may have.
So just to clarify, I'm a little confused by the attachments because they look somewhat the same, but, I mean, there's no redlining or highlighting or anything, so I'm just trying to discern, you know, there's three...
So, the first document is what we have right now. And the main issues are under investigative procedure, is my understanding. So the first, so the, currently, if you scroll down and past definitions, under the current investigative procedure, section VI, section seven, it just says, allegations of violations shall be investigated by a team designated by the administrator. And my understanding is the first draft would instead have an investigative procedure. If you look at the draft, it starts on page five, under investigative procedure, and it basically has far more detail, which would send those, instead of sending them to the administrator, would send them to corporate counsel. And then the corporate counsel would follow a very specific process to investigate, to talk to people, to make sure that there are facts to support it, and then to present that finding. And then the other alternative is an ethics panel. Instead of sending it to corporate counsel, you would send it to an ethics panel, and what does that ethics panel look like and who's on it is laid out under investigative procedure, pages five and six of the third attachment. And then the two examples include, I think Ingham had a panel, and I don't remember what Oakland has, but those are models that have come from other communities that have those mechanisms.
The third one, which is the panel?
Well, either, either of those. I didn't make a study of it. I thought Matt might, would be here to talk us through that, but...
Yeah, I guess I was hoping you could talk through a lot of this, but...
The concept is you would have a more formal process with procedures for who does what, who they talk to, what their range of options are, and then the main sort of decision point, policy decision point is would, would you want to leave it the same? Do you want a counsel investigator, or would you want a panel investigator? From there, everything else is sort of the same, but it's just a question of who do you empower to make those decisions? And there are obviously pros and cons either way.
Perhaps, bringing us back at a time when Mr. Nordford can be here to answer questions would be appropriate.
Yeah, especially since it was just added and I don't feel like time-wise...
It was a little late. I do think that this is probably going to yield a lot of conversation. This is something that the board would like to maybe have an ad hoc committee review. I do have opinions about this. You know, the, I think that it would be best suited to have it come from civil counsel in my framework. And I don't want to be a person that determines that somebody is doing something unethical. I think that should come from an outside source potentially and have, I think the ethics panel is great, and just who is going to be on that ethics panel. And ultimately, as Matt referred to previously, it just depends on the teeth and what teeth does this policy actually have. So I think there's, it's a bigger discussion than just maybe a study session. I think it probably should be something that we can sit down with civil counsel and walk through those details, and then come back to the board with an ad hoc recommendation.
Perhaps, talk about that. Any more questions for Nate? Any more comments?
Nope.
All right, we're going to move right along. 5D. Guess that's you again, for our legal matters update.
Yep. Sorry, just working with slide bars inside of slide bars. We were asked to provide just a public-facing document that has an update of our current unresolved legal issues. And what we have done is we've broken that down into a spreadsheet. I did ask each attorney or firm that was representing us in these various matters to provide me with a legal update. Those emails or letters are in the packet. One did not. That is from Cole Stoker, being Sarah Osmer, in the very top of the list, Armstrong versus GTC. Grand Travis County is involved in that lawsuit. It's a, it's a property acquisition, land dispute issue in the village of Kingsley. It's about a fence line that has been in a position for a long time, and it's an adverse possession claim. That we are a member of the lawsuit as a party of convenience because we hold a small loan for the existing owner for the parcel. That's why we were named. All parties agreed that we don't have to be involved in that case at this time, and that any resolution would not involve the loan. Was it $20,000, Dean?
Yes.
Yep. Beta...
I'm sorry, what was that last part about $20,000?
The, so they have a loan, a CD, is it CDBG?
One of our revolving loans that we made...
For the property owner, and they have to pay it back to us. The concern on behalf of our council and the reason they involved us was, would the loan go away if there was some type of a, an award for the claimant?
How much is the balance on that loan right now? Roughly?
It's a small amount, I would say, less than $20,000. I don't know exactly.
I just wondered if we're going to spend more on legal fees than the value of the loan, which is why I've always supported us getting away from being a bank.
So we are, we're not involved in that currently. We are inactive and the resolution is yet to come. Beta is a governance dispute currently represented by Kirby Albright from Frazier-Triblock. Beta is represented by Richard O'Cherry from Miller Johnson. We are in the discovery process right now. We have a settlement conference scheduled for February 5th. No jury trial, a non-jury trial is scheduled for March. Bender versus GTC, this is a former corrections officer that filed an EEOC complaint specific to sexual harassment within the jail. So it is in two spots here because that is recently, we've recently been served in that matter. Casey Conklin is her attorney, and again, we're just, we've just received the suit and we are involved in an investigation with the sheriff's office. McIntosh v. Klaus and McIntosh v. GTC are somewhat tied at the hip. GTC is inactive essentially because we are currently working through the Klaus matter. Andrew Bregge and Greg Grant from CMDA are representing the county, and Mr. Ringsmith is representing Ms. McIntosh. And we are still currently in discovery, and we are likely going to have a settlement conference sometime between here and May with a jury trial scheduled for May.
Is that settlement conference involve the county? I see that the first case is the Klaus case and the second case is the county case. Is the, is the settlement conference for all parties, to your knowledge, or is the settlement conference only the non-county parties or, what is the distinction there?
Well, the demand that we had included Mr. Klaus and the county. So I would assume that all of us will be at that conference.
So, the inactive for the, for that second lawsuit doesn't mean that the county is not at the table in the first lawsuit?
We are at, yes, thank you. What I've been told early on is that the Klaus case was, for whatever reason, dismissed or termed out that the county would, that case would also be dismissed.
And just to be clear, CMDA is our insurance counsel? MMRMA funded?
Yes. MMRMA typically uses Cummings, McClory, Davis, and Ocho for those insurance-related So Beta is an example. Beta is not an insurance-related claim because it's a governance dispute. They're not asking for damages, so MMRMA refuse coverage on that, on that case. So we, the county, are paying Frazier-Triblock directly. Gallagher is the Twin Lakes lawsuit. It's a deed restrictions and due process suit. We are currently, we have filed motions for summary judgment and we are waiting for a decision on that. We may have to have mediation if we don't get summary. The Hundley case is a brand-new MD, Michigan Department of Civil Rights case. We just recently received this. It's a claim that this gentleman was arrested due to a disability versus any activity that he was engaged in. And again, we've just been, just been served, so Greg Grant from CMDA is going to be representing us on that matter, and we are currently investigating that with the sheriff as well. Ingraham is the OMA violation case related to Twin Lakes. This was an allegation that the Board of Commissioners were provided through counsel, a settlement demand, and that demand was never discussed in public, in a public venue. Our counsel is Matt Cross and Greg Grant from CMDA, and Bryce Kern is the attorney for the plaintiff. And again, another, we have already filed for a motion for summary disposition on those matters, and if motion is, if not granted, will go to discovery.
When did that come through?
It was last year, mid-year, early, early to mid-year, when we talked about this in closed session. Greg Grant presented the settlement demand to the Board of Commissioners and the board, well, I can't tell you what the board did. I can't tell you what the board did. I can, just caught myself before I slipped, so...
I know, I just, some of the, it'd be helpful, I think, to have some dates on here, other than a trial date for people.
I can add, I can add dates of filing. Pace versus GTC, we had a mediation on last Thursday. Chairman Seifert, Vice Chairman Andrews was present during that conversation. We got to a point in time that the parties recognized that there may be a way to navigate through this case, so the case was adjourned until, to allow the counties to take some activities that would allow them to come back to the table in the future. This is another case that is not funded by MMRMA. This is a non-insurance case. So Melissa Hagan of Cole Stoker is our attorney, and Andrew Friedberg is the attorney for Pace. That mediation, by the way, included all three parties, so Pavilions was also present.
Is that through Cole Stoker? Is that part of our regular agreement? That's outside of that, right?
It is outside of the agreement. This, the Bender case is, again, the case that initially started as an EEOC complaint is now a suit, same facts. And the last case here is Walsh versus GT County, is an EEOC violation, claiming that decisions were made about his employment that were related to his disability versus any activity that may have been employment-related. We, again, county and council are investigating this case. We are supposed to be positioned, providing our position statement to the Michigan Department of Civil Rights shortly. I think that's it. Not that that's not enough. One of the concerns that I have, we have, is when you look at these dates, you see that there are some trial dates that are stacked up in 2025. If all trials go as scheduled, we're going to be busy. Any questions about these cases?
Can you just give us an overview? I know you touched on, you know, some of these are covered under insurance, other ones aren't. So can you give us a little overview of what the other ones are costing us outside of, are you able to...
We can give you that, Commissioner Walter. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head. We've recently been involved with Pace, so I don't know that there's a large cost associated with that. But the Beta, Beta dispute has been ongoing and we have engaged Frazier-Triblock since the beginning because, if you recall, Mr. Nordford had a conflict. And so, Dean, Dean and I can look at the invoicing and provide that to the board.
I just noted a small mistake between the differences where it says Hundley is in the case and, and on the spreadsheet it says Hundley, so to fix that for former...
Which one is right?
Hunt.
Huntley, all right.
Presumably that's in the attorney's report, so I'm guessing that's...
Yes, so just in honor of Commissioner, former Commissioner Hundley.
Please.
To follow up on Commissioner Walter's request, when we engage insurance counsel, is it full
coverage? I know some policies are duty to defend is absolute and they'll defend you to the end of the lawsuit, and sometimes there's a cost attached to that. I mean, there's a retainer amount and then it's on you, so I guess the question is, is there out-of-pocket for insurance, the CMDA cases?
Yes. So we have a self-insured retention amount of $75,000. And for each and every case, we have, that is our obligation. The county is going to spend $75,000, the first $75,000 in that matter. Once the county's costs go by, go past $75,000, it's completely within MMRMA's hands. So why is that relevant? If you go back to a case that involved a sniper shooting in the sheriff's department, it was many years ago, the county paid $75,000, but that was a 10-year case. So the costs associated with that case were significant. At some point in time, there was a settlement agreement reached between plaintiff and MMRMA. Because MMRMA, once they're involved, essentially they are calling the shots on what to do with settlement, what to do with the case, how to manage the case. And the county has the opportunity for something called member preference. So for that example, that case, just say as an example, they wanted to settle for a million dollars. That's not the amount, but for round numbers. The county doesn't get a say in that unless you assert member preference. And once you assert member preference, the county is responsible for everything above what MMRMA was willing to settle for. So it's, it's only been, if you, if you talk to MMRMA, it's only been done once, and it happened to be Grand Travis County. At that point in time, Grand Travis County didn't agree with the settlement situation. They declared member preference and ultimately were victorious with a, with a jury decision.
So basically what you're saying is, if we and our insurance disagree on what a payout value is on a case, we take the risk when we assert member preference?
Absolutely.
And then that, okay, so it's a risk-shifting provision?
Correct.
Does that, but that doesn't impact who's paying the legal bills?
They, well, once they, once we reach the amount, they're done.
So after the $75,000, it doesn't matter? We're still on our own?
We are on our own.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
So I'm, I'm going to add the date in honor of former Commissioner Hundley. I'm going to change the name and costs associated with non-MMRMA litigation.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Anything else? Going once, going twice? We're adjourned.
I'll second public comment.
We did second public comment.
Third.
Oh, third.
Third.
Two and a half.
What?
We have to do third.
We have...
If we print those out there.
I don't think we were getting rid of this one.
We didn't amend the agenda, we just opened another public comment.
We just added another one.
Oh, I see. Well, next time, we'll just do that correctly then, so we don't have a third public comment. Third public comment. Anybody like to speak? Please step up to the mic. Oh, here we come.
No, no.
What's he going to say?
There's always one in the room.
You asked for it. No.
Lloyd Morris, Long Lake Township, here, representing grumpy old men who can't hairwell. Up until this last break, you guys were doing really good. And Commissioner Andrews and Commissioner Walter both got gold stars. But you came back from the break and you were terrible. And, but the biggest culprit is this right here. You can hardly hear anybody that is talking because they're not short like me, they're tall. And they're up here, and even with this up like this, then they look down at their tablet that's talked, and they're not talking into this. their tablet that's talked, and they're not talking into this. So if you could do something with this mic, I'd probably be satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll look into it. Now we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.